The very first thing that I'd like to do is thank all of the participants, the candidates. They're willing us to go ahead and try to become a council member or mayor or school board member. It's a big deal, and we appreciate your cooperation for coming to this. The other thing is that I need to thank all of the participants in the audience. As you know, we are not having questions from the audience. These are all questions that have been from surveys from people from I D A, the post office, and just out and about. And we thought it was fitting so that it was not any gotcha questions. The other thing that we are going to do is we're going to alternate who the speaker is first, and we're going to see how coordinated I am throwing that coin. I have not high hopes because this is not a quarter. So I want to first say that this event is not an endorsement of any candidate or any party. And so everybody is not being, nobody, Voice of the Shores, North Beach TV, anybody here is not endorsing a candidate. This is an opportunity for you to learn more about the candidates running for this particular office. And I need to also say thank you to North Beach TV, Darrell Prowse and Scott Johnston, I said it right, Rick Beveridge, back here, our sound guy, Dave Bunch, who helped tremendously, the Lions Club, Garrett Johnson, Voice of the Shores, who were behind this, and Lynn Buttefeldt for the refreshments, thank you all, and again, candidates and citizens for attending this. And...
So before you throw the coin, I would say, PJ, if you want to decide who goes first, I'm happy with that without a coin.
So Richard, you don't have permission to talk.
No.
Okay, heads or tails?
I'll take tails.
Heads. The shores.
So I need to start off?
That is. Now you have permission to talk.
Now I have.
You get to pick the question and hand it to me in I D A.
I'll go to start with the introduction.
Well, no, I didn't want to do it that way, but yes, you have a point. Yes, go right ahead.
How do you want to do?
Go ahead with your introduction.
So by electing me Richard Wills, you will be electing a member, a council member, who will continue the nearly 12-year tradition of making the fiscal responsible decisions that are turning Ocean Shores into one of the best cities in which to live, work, and play. I have a history of service to our community. My wife Alex and I moved here in September of 2016. Our hearts tell us we are finally home. Throughout my military career and life in general, it seems like I had moved every three or four or five years, and so it feels great to really be home now. Being home, I want to get back to the community. I've served six years on the Fresh Waterways Corporation. I'm also the wet master for the Fresh Waterways Corporation. I've also served four years as a planning commissioner. As a planning commissioner, I have dove deep into the ordinances and in fact have drafted the first draft of many of the ordinances that went before city council. So I created the first draft, planning commissioner, then hashed and rehashed and resaged, and then it went up to city council. So I have, my point is, I've been very deep into the city ordinances and how to make this a better community. I'm a data block, so I believe strongly in research, science, facts, and data. And sometimes, I tend to go down the rabbit hole. I'm going to try to avoid doing that tonight, so just forewarning, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole. I'm eager to engage with everybody in the community, and I'm ready to discuss your concerns, so let me know what you want to talk about. The best way to do that is by emailing me at arwillsforshores@gmail.com. If you want to meet in person, then you can say that in your email, we'll figure out and coordinate how we can meet in person. A little bit about my background, I'm a retired army's first sergeant, I spent 24 years in the army. At first sergeant, as effectively the chief operations officer for the unit, I had about 220 soldiers under my supervision. My wife and I, Alex and I, moved here, I think I said, in 2016. My first council meeting, oh, my time?
No.
My first council meeting was a few weeks later. I have attended virtually every single council meeting since that first council meeting, minus three, in the last seven years. So I consider myself pretty well informed and aware of what's going on in the council and in the community. So without further ado, I could give a lot more background, but you want to know what the answers to the questions are. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. PJ, you don't have to have the coin toss.
PJ, you got five minutes, and I'll count you down if you go get close.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Peggy Joe Furia. My friends call me PJ, and I hope you will call me PJ too. My husband Jim and I have been full-time residents of Ocean Shores since 2016, upon my retirement from Costco Wholesale Corporation, and Jim's as a 30-plus-year tugboat captain. We purchased our golf course home in 2012, starting as part-time residents, spending many weekends and holidays, enjoying all that our city does have to offer. We have had wonderful opportunities to visit many tourism and residential-based beach towns up and down the east and west coast. This really does help me to have a clear picture of the amenities and services that beach towns such as these offer to both the visitors and the residents, and I think that's very helpful. Therefore, with those experiences and my background of design, retail management, and marketing, it makes me an ideal choice for city council. This upcoming election is of utmost importance to the tax-paying residents that I've been meeting with in the last few months. Many feel as though their voices are being lost in the shuffle. To be clear, this election is not about me. This election is about you and your right to be heard. Placing community members at the top of the organizational chart places council members in their rightful service position. Sadly, our city lost its local newspaper a few years ago. The city-owned and operated radio station is a critical element for local communication, but it is in dire need of allowing conversation and differing opinions to be respectfully discussed on air. Without this type of communication, many rely on social media, where the rumor mill runs rampant. This leads to misconceptions and a division between many citizens. Supporting the Ocean Shores residents and the city's infrastructure for the veterans of all is key to bringing our citizens together in a positive manner. My top priorities for serving you are obtaining an effective urgent care clinic, holding the line on city expenditures, establishing a city, excuse me, a citizens' ethics council for accountability for city officials. I make sure people know their voice matters and follow through with actions. I am used to working under pressure, all while keeping a friendly business-like manner, even in the most challenging situations. My successful work with the media under tight deadlines and supporting various levels of corporate business prove me to be the perfect steward for your voice here in Ocean Shores. Veteran support is also very important to me. Cindy and Otis Warren are here this evening, and they have some informational flyers on a veteran's stand-down event, which I hope you will chat with them afterwards to learn about. In closing, we live in a beautiful paradise community, and I give you all my commitment for doing my part in keeping it that way. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, that went really smooth. So now we're going to have to pick one of the stuff. I cannot find a fishbowl, I tried, I tried, so here's a fishing creole.
Then I'm going to give you the card, you're going to read it.
I am. Oops. If I don't destroy the mic. I am concerned by what appears to be a lack of consistent enforcement of our traffic laws. I see speeders and wrong-way drivers on Ocean Shore Boulevard regularly. What are you proposing to do about it?
So the first thing that I recognize is that we have 10 cops to serve the city 24/7, 365. So we can put more enforcement out there, but that means doubling or curtailing the police force, and what's that going to cost, and where's that money going to come from? So wrong-way drivers, I haven't seen wrong-way drivers, but I don't spend much time on those places. What I do know is if I'm on like Duck Lake Drive, and there's a pedestrian on my side of the street, and there's no oncoming traffic, I move all the way over so that pedestrian is confident that I'm aware of them and I'm giving them the right of way. If there is oncoming traffic, I stop, so there's no confusion in the pedestrian's mind that I know that they're there. So how can, what can the city do? I don't have an answer to that, except hire more police officers, and that would add significantly if you are already stretched budget. I don't need much time, that's it.
Thank you. Yes, we do need to show some respect for our police department and all of the people within that department. The problem with speeding and other types of situations does occur, I think, a lot more when we have a lot of visitor representation here. I know that a lot of us, of course, live in here, we understand where we need to slow down, and we need to be aware, and hopefully we are taking full advantage of making sure that we move over, watch out, even for the deer and everything else. But we do need to support our first responders, and I believe that decision-making on something like an expansion of police officers and whatever department, whichever entity we're speaking of, it would be quite important to get all of the citizens involved through finding out what their feelings are, and then being able to move forward in a positive way, looking at financial possibilities for expansion.
Ma'am, we may run out of questions.
Good.
Okay. I'm seeing many building lots stripped bare in violation of city code. Do you believe we should be enforcing our law codes, law or slash code? What would you do to assure the taxpayers this is happening?
Codes are definitely set up for different reasons, depending upon the situation. When you are looking at different lots where they're being stripped, I had the opportunity to hear some clarification about different situations. When you just go in and maybe leave some trees, but you're stripping down sections of a lot, you can actually cut through something very critical to the support of a tree that could then fall on a building. So there's a lot of pieces to that puzzle that you have to take into consideration. I do believe that our codes need to be adhered to, but I also believe that sometimes we have a little bit of overreach on some of the codes. So I think once I have that opportunity to be on a city council position and looking at different code situations, I think that it would be best to judge each of those by what the code is to enforce. I think there are some cases where we can make some concessions, and then I also think that we can do things to protect neighbors who maybe have a situation going on with an empty lot that's been stripped down, and now they've got sand blowing all over their place. I know there are things that we do to protect them.
So interestingly, I am one of four people on a council lot clearing ordinance committee. We're going to meet tomorrow, and we hope to finalize our draft of the committee and then send it to city council for approval. So one of the things that I think it's important for all of us to remember is, back in 2012, the city was virtually broke, and we had like $600,000 to $200,000 of 2023 dollars in our general fund as we started the year. Now we have almost $2.6 million in 2023 dollars as we started the fiscal year. The point is, is back then, that the mayor and the council at that time drastically cut staff, which meant cutting services, in order to keep the city from going bankrupt. They've done an astonishingly good job at that. In fact, they've paid down $32 million in debt since that 2012. So back then, lot clearing, housing remained. Well, the city only had one staff member, and the city is droid in an astonishing way. That one staff member could not keep up with all of the lot clearing, so enforcement is the key. Now the city has three people in that office, and one of the things that happens before any lot clearing permit is given is that one of those staff members goes out and counts every significant tree on the property. A significant tree is any tree that is eight inches in caliber, measured four feet above the root flare, the tree flare. So we start out knowing how many significant trees there are, and in the ordinance we're proposing, that at least 10% of the significant trees must remain. If you only started with 10 trees or nine trees, you still must have one tree remaining. So before the occupancy permit, or if you're a camping lot, before the camping permit is issued, you've got to be in compliance with that code. As far as going sand, the SWIP, and I don't remember what SWIP stands for, but it is element five of the SWIP, you know just exactly what the developer or property owner has to do to keep the vegetation, to keep the sand and the dirt coherent if they're blowing around. One of the things that fulfills that requirement is a silt fix, and we've seen several silt fixes going up around the properties. Another way is to put straw bales down. Marshall, the city planner, is diligently pursuing those, and the only exceptions he makes is if that property is currently in active phases of development. And it doesn't make sense to have him stop what he's doing and cover it, and then uncover it so that he can dig the trench.
Just got it.
Okay. Thank you.
How do I get that thing to turn off? Still haven't figured it out.
Would you like to visit?
Oh. I forgot it was my turn.
We live on the canals and are appalled by the lack of maintenance of our fresh waterways. Spring concerns us. Do you know of other methods for keeping our fresh waterways usable?
So let's start with spring, to start with. Frogs and turtles are marker species. If the frogs are croaking, and I hear them serenade every night during the mating season, then we know that the waterway, the chemicals used in the waterways are not toxic, they're not killing the flora and fauna in the waterways, except for the weeds that we're targeting to kill. Doug Dorley, who has been treating our waterways for, I don't know, 15 or 20 years, scientifically goes out and measures what weeds are there, how dense are the weeds, and then calculates what amount of the appropriate chemical is needed to control the weeds. His goal is to always leave some frigid vegetation along the edges of the canals or lakes, so that we have vegetation hiding places for the frog, for the baby fish. So mechanical harvesting is a good idea. The trouble with mechanical harvesting is you can only harvest about 1.5 to 2 acres a day, and we have 200 acres of canals in our waterway system, we have another 300 acres of lakes, but in general, the lakes are not a big weed or algae problem. So the thing that drives the weeds is phosphorus, and we know from the I A V M P, the invasive aquatic weed management plan, we know that the phosphorus content of our water, Duck Lake is an exception, Duck Lake is pretty okay, but the canals and Lake Menard, phosphorus level is so high, it's called U-tro, U-trophy, I don't know if I can say that word right. There's many times more phosphorus than is ideal. The way to control phosphorus is alum. And if we can control the phosphorus, then we would control the weeds without using herbicides. I looked up and found a way to compare and extrapolate, it would cost the city someplace between $3.5 to $6 million to treat our waterways with alum. Where's the money? And until we get the money, then I think that we have to keep putting Band-Aids on and keep treating the weeds, but even when we do everything else right, even if we get mechanical harvesting, harvesting in operation, that mechanical harvesting will not be the whole solution. We're always going to have to do some form of pesticide treatment. That's all I have.
Your turn. Thank you. I am not a professional waterway expert, and so therefore I think that it's very wise for us to consult with experts. I do believe that there are other avenues of caring for the waterways. I know that we did just join the group that will come out and help us with different waterway programs, if you will, but also there are things such as aeration and definitely equipment. But we also need to go back to the homeowners, because I've met with a number of them as I'm doing door knocking in the community, and there are some that very sadly have been told that they can't just do basic edge weeding. I don't know the details on that, that would be something for Marshall or whomever handles that. But they're very disappointed because of the condition of the waterways. So it's important and critical to our community, and I do think that we need to address it as a community. But again, the voice of the people, I think, is what counts, and we need to be looking at professionals who really know how to take care of this situation. Thank you.
Okay, next.
There's not a fish in there.
No, I know. No, it's been a while since my husband has caught a fish.
Oh.
What is a council manic bond or a councilmatic bond? If and what would you approve the use of this method of finance? And would you be able to tell me the highest dollar amount that that?
I don't know what the answer to that is. I don't know what a councilmatic bond is.
I don't either. Sorry, I don't know.
Never heard of it.
Sorry, maybe when I get out of council, I'll learn that.
I've been on council for, since September, I've never heard of it.
Okay, well...
Give them an answer to the definition.
The councilmatic bond was brought up at a public comment during a council meeting, I believe, and that's why, I believe that's why they're asking us.
I'm sorry, I just don't remember. I'm sorry.
I've been to almost every council meeting, and my memory is not perfect by a long shot, but I don't recall ever hearing the term councilmatic. Is that like a unsomatic?
I'll definitely look it up and find out.
For the next time, you know, this is difficult because these two are the guinea paces. These two candidates are the ones that are doing this first, and we're all learning from this. So I'm going to actually go to Richard to have him pull out the next question. Only one.
They're sticking together.
There have been many instances when Ocean Shore's municipal code, O S M C, has been vague or out of date, posing enforceability issues. Considering that sections of the O S M C have remained on touch for over two decades, and recognizing that the code constitutes a significant element of council duties, the question of modernizing, enhancing this, is enhancing its legal coherence becomes essential. What would you do to enforce that or start that?
So in the seven years that I've been going to council, many codes have been updated. One of the things that the council has discussed and I fully support is that we hire a professional service to come in, as I think they did in Aberdeen, and rewrite and cross-reference all of the codes, because our codes are so convoluted that they one overlaps the other, and it's like chasing worms to figure out how they all are connected together. So the council has been updating codes bit by bit. It's a convoluted process, and you have to check five or six or eight different codes to know the complete answer, and anything you do here can affect there. So that's why I say that we need a professional that's beyond the scope of what I think the city council is able to do. So my answer is, find the money, allocate the money, hire a professional, and have them come in and address the code from top to bottom. We could stand to have our codes improved. Absolutely agree. Meanwhile, the city council is doing the very best that we can to keep the codes that are the most frequently come to mind, to keep those updated and current, to win the change in the lot clearing code that will go before the next city council, I mean probably. I think that's September 11. So the revision should be ready, and then it should go to the council for council action. That's one example of updating code.
I agree, actually, and I also believe that having our city attorney, although I don't know if that is his area of expertise, so I would have to ask that question of him. But we need to have legal consult on this, look at what other cities have done, and I completely agree that it would be something that could be quite important for us not to step into a litigious situation, so having consultation with professionals. I agree.
Boy, this is going to get over quick. You all are going to have a lot of time for me to read. We thought you'd be long-winded in three minutes each.
I've been channeling my inner Gilda.
And I appreciate that. What would you propose to help Ocean Shores grow economically?
Ooh, I love that one. First off, we have a beautiful convention center, and unfortunately, I do feel that it could be expanded upon as far as its usage goes. My background, working for Costco corporate entity, I did a lot of marketing for providing different events and so forth, and so I think that that's something very critical. We've got that building, we've got that space. Also, I think marketing ourselves as a destination location as a community would be very critical. One of the pieces to that puzzle is we have got to take care of our health needs here. We've got to have urgent care clinic here, because visitors coming in and having even a minor injury, they need to be able to have some resources. Now, certainly our first responding fire department does have the open door policy there with the clinic, but it's different than what I'm speaking of. So there are a number of things that we can do to make ourselves certainly more enticing, if you will, to apply communities. We need to look at our internet access and make sure that it is 100% up to the highest point that it can be, and that will attract more people to be able to come here, even if it's just for vacation, so they know they can work from their homes. Those are just a few of the items I would suggest.
So we kind of nothing, reread the question, I was listening so intent to PJ that I want to refocus on the question.
What would you propose to help Ocean Shores grow economically?
So inviting new light industry to the community is, it sounds like an issue, like a really good idea. The planning commission addressed that several years ago, and one of the drawbacks to light industry is many, perhaps most light industry, requires a lot of water, and water's not something I think that we should give up to industry, or we need it for our human use and gardens. So light industry may not be the answer. PJ mentioned urgent care. Well, I think that urgent care is a great thing for the community. One of our residents, fairly new, Janet Nina, is just close to bringing urgent care to Ocean Shores. She's done it on her own, she's formed a... She's formed an advisory board. She's got a website up. She has a plan for if they get the 501(c)(3) rating that they have applied for, then she'll be ready to start moving forward. So we may have urgent care nationally pretty soon. As far as the convention center, I have not looked at the convention center calendar this year. I did look at it last year and it was pretty darned full. Barely enough time to turn around and get the convention center ready for the next event. So I, without checking with George, who's running the convention center now, I don't know how much room he has for work at the convention center. Frankly, what I would like to see us do is I would like to see Ocean Shores develop more recreational opportunities. So that means perhaps the North Grand Canal Park, the High News Trail that we are close to finishing the first segment of. I'd like to see that High News Trail go all the way around the peninsula down to Breeview and back up Duck Lake Drive, making a walking, biking pass, path. That would bring tourists who are primarily daytime tourists off the beach. So when it gets cold and windy and rainy, they have maybe something else to do. So whatever those recreational opportunities are. But more recreational opportunities would bring more money to the city. And, and the other thing PJ mentioned, high-speed internet. We have fiber optic internet down into the downtown. But that's not a city function to bring fiber optic to my house. And unfortunately, we all have, have to rely either on Citrix Tel or on, um, who does, my mind's gone wrong. Who does it? Coast, Citrix Tel or Coast. Improving fiber optics and high-speed internet is more worth it home opportunities. So, but that's not a city function. That's a private enterprise function. Is only that?
So just so that we're clear, the fact that I gave him the name of a company that works here in this area is not me helping the candidate. I just, I just want to make sure that, that it's no, no unfair advantage here.
Well, in my defense, I might just drive this and nearly as fast as I used to. So sometimes I have to really reach for that word that I want.
When we retired here, we had thought we would be leaving behind the negativity surrounding politics, that politics these days. But it is just as bad as Ocean Shores. Do you have any ideas to try to bring back civility back to city politics?
So one good start is the event we just had recently, the Neighborhood Night Out. The more that we co-knew, the more that we communicate with each other, the more that we have neighborhood parties. Neighborhood parties and meeting our neighbors is a way to humanize each other. And when we humanize each other, we realize that Fred or Sue or Sam, they're not, they're not evil, they're not villains. They may have a different point of view, but that doesn't make them a bad person. And so things that can create more social activity, I go back to the recreational opportunities. When I have been kayaking, not only here, but I lived on a sailboat for 11 years. Did a lot of kayaking out in the, in the Tred Harbor area. And when I ran into other kayakers, we stopped paddling and communicated with each other. We got to know each other. So I think that that is probably the key. It's sad that we have all this, the physicalness of this community. I'm not entirely sure where all of that comes from. And internet probably contributes to some of that. I still want the internet pulling. And if we could just curb that somehow, humanizing each other, I think is the ultimate doable way to progress.
Absolutely. We need to start looking at each other as human beings, not worrying about how he lives his life, she lives her life. He said this, she said that. We need to respect each other. We need to smile at people, we need to wave at them, and we need to understand each other. Preconceived notions based on what someone may have said about something can be a real problem. It divides people. If you have a question about something with a person, just ask them. They'll give you an honest answer usually. The political world can be a bit challenging because I feel there are situations where maybe people are feeling as though, oh no, if that person wanted to become an official in the city, that could be a problem because of this or that. We need to get down to brass tacks, look at each other honestly. Everyone should be honest, ethical, and above board. No more of this rumor mill garbage. And I'm sorry to be so strong about that. But having been a person of being, being accused of something that was not appropriate really upset me. So I will say right now, I am one who is ethical and honest and who can come to you with anything. And that's how we pull everybody together. If we don't pull all of us together in a good way, we'll never get ahead as a community. And you have my absolute promise that that is something that I pride myself on to help you, the voices of the community.
Okay. There's someone behind you, Jen. We want to fill the hall. Do you support businesses using engineered buildings like at Ocean Pours? Why or why not?
Absolutely. If we take Ocean Pours as an example, those people worked very hard to conform to whatever the standards were above and beyond what was necessary. And I believe it was during the COVID situation. We need to look at each case individually and respectfully look at what a business has done and can do to be in a strong realm for safety for those who are visiting that business. So I believe that in that particular case, if that's the only one that we're speaking of right at the moment, then I believe that we need to be supportive of them. I was there not too long ago and there was a comment made about, I think it was 20 pounds of snow per square inch. Don't know if we did that part, but it was 20 pounds of snow on this, the tent mechanism, if you will. And, I mean, we don't get 20 pounds of snow. But the point is, I believe they really tried to do whatever they could to have a very expensive entity safe for those who are visiting. So we need to support that.
So Ocean Pours has done a really, really good job. And when they asked for that permit, it was right in the, in the midst of the whole COVID thing. And there was not enough seating in their brick and mortar building. So they wanted to put up a temporary structure. They asked for a temporary permit, that permit was granted. And it is still a temporary permit. I think they've done a wonderful job with their, with their engineered structure. It's still a tent. And I think that tents in a zone, in a B2 zone, which is primarily geared towards outdoor type activities, fully supported. But tents in a B1 zone, yeah, not so much. Do you want your doctor's office or your dentist's office visit to be in an engineered structure? If we allow unfettered use of tents, we've got approximately 80 vacant lots in the downtown corridor. So do you want 80 tents downtown? And my opinion, tents in a B2 zone, yes. That's what the B2 zone is for. Tents in the B1 zone, I would prefer to see doctor's offices and, and grocery stores and retail outlets, not tents. So in B2, absolutely 100%. B1, not so much.
What can be done or offered to entice new businesses to open in Ocean Shores? I'm sorry. I, I apparently wasn't speaking into the microphone. What can be done or offered to entice new businesses to open in Ocean Shores?
That's a hard question and I need to, I need to ponder that for just a moment. It's not the city's job to incentivize new businesses. On the other hand, some communities have offered tax breaks depending on the type of business. That's a thing that I think Ocean Shores could explore and the city council could reach a decision on. But is that fair to the other brick and mortar businesses that did not get that tax break? So what do we encourage, how do we encourage? You know, as, as a community, the Chamber of Commerce can do things to encourage. But the city doesn't run a Chamber of Commerce. The city runs a community, runs a city. So I, I'm racking my brain to think, what could the city do? The city's job is to, is to, the city council's job is to decide on the budget and to legislate ordinances. Those are the two primary functions that the city council member has. Could we write an ordinance that encourages a business? Well, the city's job is to decide what the zoning for businesses should be. So for example, when the planning commission and the city decided up about where homeless services could be put up, that's a zoning issue. The city addressed that. So that's kind of encouraging new business. So I really don't know how to answer that question.
Well, as many of you may know, recently we were able to put in an opportunity for food trucks. And that was certainly a wonderful thing that became available. City businesses, definitely, when I say city businesses, any business here within the commercial zoning as appropriate. I believe that our city, while it may not be a specific council member's decision, if you will, but to definitely support expansion in our city helps all of us. All of that financing will help keep our tax, tax expenses down. It will also help to build all of the vacationers that do come here. Now, I know some of us are retired and some don't like the vacationers and I get all that. But there's a way for all of us to get along, as they say. So I do believe that it falls upon the city as an entity to market itself in a friendly outgoing way to encourage people to come in. And don't forget about our youth. We have young people, let's say at the high school age, who are looking at future careers. I believe it's very important to allow them to come in, maybe learn about business, maybe volunteer for a little bit. That would certainly take cooperation from a business owner. But that's a good thing to do for our future. And that could be a helpful step in actually melting, if you will, different people of different age groups and helping people, especially the young, to have some goals and look at their futures, which we could support.
We would like to see our city government resume the monthly chat with the council meetings. We thought they were a good opportunity to have the city here run the taxpayers and are disappointed that they were discontinued. Would you support resuming these meetings? If so, how and why?
So do I start or this?
Nope. I'm saying it just so that you can hear.
I 1,000%, I know that's not a real number, but to bring town halls into our community, we need this open line of communication. I mentioned the radio station earlier. We shouldn't be afraid to discuss issues. We're needing to bring everyone together, of course, in a respectful way. We're not all going to agree. You might like coffee in the morning, I might like tea. That's okay. We just need to come together and have conversation. And I believe that having town halls, having open meeting forums is definitely the way to go. I know that it takes time. I know that it takes time for people to attend and not everyone can attend. So having those available via Zoom calls, et cetera, would be very helpful to those who can't attend. I think a good example of looking at community support and involvement is if you've ever been to the table here on Tuesday nights, it is just amazing to me how engaging the people are with each other. It may be their only time out during the week and I think it's just wonderful. It shows the strength of all of you as community members. Not everybody agrees on everything, but they sit down and they have a nice dinner together and they're able to talk. And I think that's incredible.
So I'm a loss because city chat has been happening virtually every month since almost four years. So that city chat has been, has been discontinued. I'm not aware. On the other hand, I do know that, for example, yesterday there was a meeting at the library attended by about 40 people. And it was in essence, a town hall meeting. And they were discussing and asking suggestions for improving bicycle and pedestrian safety throughout the city. I remember not so many weeks or months ago, we had a town hall meeting that discussed the details of the IAVMP, the Invasive Aquatic Vegetation Management Plan. The city has done a stellar job, I think, in communicating. The city has just started publishing what's called a flip book. It's on the first page of the city's website, another communication tool. Town hall meetings are great and they have their place. And I think that, that citizen input for all of the major and important big financing decisions should have citizen input. But city chat, city chat's been here for, I think, four years, I think. I think that John started that as he, when he was the mayor pro-cam, John Martin, our mayor. So somebody enlighten me, when, or what city chat has been discontinued?
I would venture to guess that it is because the city chats are not three council members. And it, the time's been used and it's been used well, but it's not the dialogue between the three, the three council members.
So thank you for the.
And the audience.
So thank, thank you for that enlightenment. And.
Well, that's, that's, that's what you're going to get.
Well, that's, that's great. And, and if that's the case, I would be all in favor of bringing back those three council members. I was not on the council when the three members stopped coming. My recollection at the time, several council members said, I'm not comfortable doing this, whatever the reasons were. And that's why those meetings stopped. So what happened after that was a formatting. This is the subject under discussion, but the citizens can bring up any questions that they want at any of those now scheduled chat meetings. So you don't have to stick on subject that was the published subject for that meeting. That's all I got. Thank you.
I hear discussions regarding the funding of the public library, or of our public library. What do you believe is the proper way to fund our library and why? Did you mention changing the library funding during this campaign?
So I remember very distinctly when the idea was floated of taking the library out of the general fund and funding it through a levy. It used to be funded through a levy. A drawback on levy funding a library. My wife is one of the people who has written grants for the library. She knows a little bit about the subject. And I'm not a grant writer, I don't have the kids, but she would pick so. When a library is levy funded, the people who grant, what, the people who grant, uh, make the grant. When a library is levy funded, the people who grant, the people who grant, make the grant donations are reluctant to fund levy-funded libraries because they consider them not physically secure. So, I'm a hundred percent in favor of both the library and the information center, the coastal integrity center being funded through the general fund. The library costs the city round numbers about five hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year. And the services that the library provides are, every citizen, our visitor in the community can go and partake of those services. The amount of material that the library lends out, the meeting room. But you realize that the library meeting room is the only meeting room in the city that does not charge. This facility does pretty good, I don't know what that is. But if you have something that you're doing in your neighborhood, you can go to the library and say, "I'd like the small or the big meeting room." The library needs to be funded through the general fund, and the cost of the library is not that significant. One of the ideas floated was that we should take the library back to levy and that we should put the ambulance service in the general fund. Well, the ambulance service, just the ambulance utility bill, if my memory is correct, comes out to, I think, like four million dollars, no, two, two, two point six million dollars in here, maybe. So, if we swap the library and the ambulance utility, the city would be in the hole about two hundred dollars. That doesn't make any sense to me. The ambulance utility serves its function and does it well and makes ambulance services affordable for all of us. So, yes, I was involved in that discussion. Yes, I wrote something, I don't even remember now, that broke out what the library cost and what the ambulance utility cost. Leave the library alone. It's the heart and soul of the city.
Would you read the question one more time? I just want to be very clear about the question, if you will.
I hear discussions regarding the funding of our public library. What do you believe is the proper way to fund our library and why? And do you mention changing, did you mention changing the library funding during this campaign?
I absolutely did not mention changing the funding of the library. And I would like to clear up that rumor right now because someone approached me and said, "You want to change the funding of the library," and I absolutely have never said that. Nor has anyone that I've been sort of attached to, if you will, said that. Someone else told me they had it in writing, so I'd like to see that. My point here, though, this is up to the people. The library provides an incredible service. I back it wholeheartedly. As a matter of fact, after I heard about this, I called a group of friends and I said, "You know what? It's time that we step up and squelch this." So, you know what we did? We all joined the Friends of the Library. It's fifteen dollars a year. That is nothing for many people. And I have to say that I was very proud to go ahead and go to my first event there to try to help with the children. They were doing a special watermelon event. And I feel as though this is one of the things and one of the examples, if you will, where we forget who we are as people. We have to engage with each other. So, as people, if there's to be some change in the future or some question in the future, the people, you are the people, you are the voices. Your voices matter. Your voices count. I think that is most critical. Thank you for that question.
They're sticking to the wicker here. Why can't I camp on my lot more than ninety days? How do you feel about extending the time limit? I feel persecuted.
Thank you. That's a great question. I have to say that I've attended a few meetings where I have engaged with people who are RV lot owners. Now, these are RV lot owners, in many cases, who own RVs that are more expensive than the home that I actually built. And they keep them up quite nicely. I understand there are quotes and concerns about maybe certain situations where they're not keeping it up or, you know, partying all night long and bothering the neighbors. We can take care of that. We have quotes for that. But I wholeheartedly support allowing the RV lot owners to please come here, enjoy our town. You're paying money for taxes, you're paying money for your water bill, your power bill, whatever else it is. There is one gentleman that I'd like to thank wholeheartedly, Matt Buchanan. He has led a group of RV lot owners here, and he interviewed a number of us candidates recently. What he did is he asked us questions about this very specific thing, and they were great questions. So, we've all done that, and I know he'll be putting the information out there soon. I think it's just unfair to restrict people when they are tax-paying citizens. One of them actually said to me, "You know, this last year, I brought twenty-five thousand dollars into the community just in my meals that I bought, you know, different things that they did." I'm not even including the tax amount. But these are people who are bringing revenue to this city, and we should embrace them and include them and really enjoy that opportunity here. It's very unique for Ocean Shores, I think. Not all cities allow this, so I think it's really an incredible thing. My husband and I are RV owners, and we go places too. And it's nice to know what the restrictions are, but I think we need to really look at this and be more open with people. Thank you.
So, this is a really great question, and it has two sides. The RV stay has been brought to City Council, I don't know, three or four or five times in seven years I've been going to council meetings. I bicycle, or actually tricycle around my neighborhood a lot. I see a lot of the RV campers, and as PJ pointed out, some of those campmobiles are more expensive than my house. All of the neighbors that I have met and talked and shaken hands with have all been great neighbors. I think the original concern may have been the clankets moving in next door and what that would do to the neighborhood. I have not seen that, but I have not experienced all of the camping lots in Ocean Shores. Ultimately, camping is a zoning decision, and it is a City Council's decision that desperately, direly needs input from the record, from the other citizens in the community. I have heard many residents in council meetings be pro-extending the camping, and I have heard many other residents be very adamantly against extending the camping. My personal position, I don't see anything wrong with allowing more than ninety days, a hundred and twenty, maybe a hundred and eighty days, three sixty? Yeah, probably not. But that's not my decision as a council member. That would take a majority vote of the council to decide whether or not we should allow that. I particularly think, as a citizen, not as a council person, that those camping lots who are semi-developed, and I'm talking about water and sewer and electricity, I would be much, I would be very much in favor of allowing them more latitude than the strictly undeveloped camping lots. As PJ pointed out, those people are paying. City sewer and the utility, electricity, and the water. So, they are supporting our city. Many of them ultimately will build houses and then become fully, full-time residents and be paying a full property tax rate. So, tricky question, but it's a question to be decided by the community. Frankly, I would like to see that decision go on one of the ballots as, what do they call that? Your recommendation, there's a name for that. I can't pull it up right now. But I think that's a citizen decision that needs to be made.
It really is sticking to the wicker inside. I guess I'll be looking for a fishbowl next time.
You should align the inside of the glass.
My, like I would bring it. When we moved from California a few years ago, we were surprised to find we still have to purchase bottled water. Can our drinking, cooking water supply be made so that we can actually drink and cook with our tap water? I won't give the tap water to our animals. So, there really wasn't a question, but there's a concern, I guess.
And I think that's a very valid concern. Those residents who are having issues with their tap water, I fully understand your concerns. Regina, the state water expert, was out here a couple of weeks ago, and she spoke to the water. The city tests the water. There's tests that are done daily, done weekly, done monthly, and done on a water scale. Every one of those tests, the city water passes all of the state's standards. However, there are still some residences that have this black slime mold. The black slime mold is a function of a manganese bacteria. So, when there is not sufficient chlorine in the available water, then that manganese bacteria starts to thrive, and you get the black slime coming out. What brings chlorine in? Using the water. So, if you are in a house, and I don't know this, I'm not the water expert, but if all of the taps were turned on in your house, maybe there's an unused bathroom, for example, upstairs, that the water has been in that pipe and becomes stagnant. That manganese bacteria cannot grow in there because there's no new chlorine going into that pipe. And then that bacteria may permeate into the house. I don't know what the answer is. What I do know is that the city is aggressively searching for the, to understand the problem and solve the problem. The black slime is a function of the manganese bacteria. The water in my house, I drink out of my tap all of the time. I prefer to drink out of the refrigerator's filtered water. But the tap water is virtually the same. I just like the idea of one additional filter. So, I understand the concern. I appreciate the concern. I hear the concern. I know the city is addressing the concern. I know that the city aggressively tests the water, and that overall, our water is safe. And if there's an individual house problem, then we need to dig deeper. Both the homeowner and the city can dig deeper and understand how to solve that problem. Part of the solution is to flush the hydrants more often. We went for a couple of years because of COVID where the hydrants are not being flushed, and so that may have exacerbated the growth of the manganese bacteria. But I'm not that expert. I leave that to Ricky, who is our water supply expert. And I appreciate the work that's being done, the solution. I don't have a, I don't use bottled water. I've never had to use bottled water in the city.
Thank you. I do appreciate that the city is paying attention to the issue. I want you to know that I met a gentleman the other day who said to me, "I've lived here twenty-five years, and I don't have any problem with the water." Perfect. However, there are also residents here who are having problems. My understanding from Regina at the Health Department, and I will not try to quote all of the long, drawn-out answers, but generally, the gist is that when they test, it is for certain diseases that are part of their testing program. Now, you can go into other long-term effects from other parts of the water quality. And Richard mentioned the manganese, and that was definitely part of that report. I believe there are other testing processes that can be done. They can be expensive, so we need to really look again to the people to figure out, what do you feel? What do you need done? Where are the areas that there seem to be concerns? And let's take a look at that. I personally buy a bottled water system. It just gives me confidence. It's a personal choice. If you're not having a problem, terrific. However, we have to be respectful to those who are saying, "I'm having a problem." And let's be sure that we do everything we can to support them. Thank you.
Should the city designate further funds to improve and maintain our freshwaterways? How would you propose to fund this if you said yes?
Well, we just joined up with the, what is that thing called?
Conservation District.
Thank you. The Conservation District. Now, she's equal. She helped out of us. I knew the word, but anyway. Conservation District. And thanks to some research, we've been told that actually, the Conservation District will come out, if you're a property owner, on the waterways, and they will look at your area and help you. And that's part of the program that apparently you've signed up for. Now, right now, it's a very nominal fee that is part of this Conservation District to us. I know in the future, though, there could be some other fees based on other projects that they may be involved in. It's speculative, but it's been talked about, so we need to talk about it. Do we spend more money on it? I think there can be grants for that, but there's other processes. So, we need to really look at that. It's not all about chemicals. I have a whole packet of chemical information. And I know they're FDA-approved, and you can drink them and all that. I'm not doing it. Just my personal choice might not be your personal choice. But I think that we need to, again, look at the professionals who can help us with this type of thing. And if we need to find funding here as a city to support the situation in a good constructive way without harming people, and I'm kind of referring to extreme measures, then I would say, "Let's look at that." Again, it's up to the citizens.
So, once again, I really appreciate you re-read, so I can, you better focus.
Sometimes I need to refresh my memory, too. Should the city designate further funds to improve and maintain our freshwaterways? How would you propose to fund this if you said yes?
So, my memory, although I'm kind of a data block, I don't always remember exact numbers, but my memory is that the city allocated, I think, a hundred thousand dollars to the freshwaterways. That's a good start, but it's just barely a start. Yes, I think the city needs to spend more money on taking care of the maintenance of the waterway system. As a trustee of the corporation, I've been out in the water for six-plus years. And we've been doing some of the maintenance that maybe the city could have taken possession of. But the city didn't have the manpower or the funds to do that. So, as PJ mentioned, that the Conservation District is going to give the city access to twenty more grant writers, I think maybe twenty-one more grant writers than we currently have. We have Sarah Bisson right now. Sarah Bisson has brought in eight, exactly, eight million dollars since she has been the grant writer. What would twenty more grant writers potentially bring in? Solving the waterway issue is not a hundred thousand dollar process. It's not a one million dollar process. It could be a forty, fifty, sixty million dollar process. It needs to be done a little chunk at a time. Meanwhile, the city is doing the best that it can with the help of the Water Advisory Board, which is a city board function, and the help of the Fresh Waters Nonprofit Corporation. So, yeah, we need to spend more money. Where's the money going to come from? I think part of that money can come from more recreation activities. The more recreation activities we have, then the more tourists are going to come in and spend more money, which means more revenue, a larger revenue stream for the city. That still is not going to be enough to solve the waterway issues. Ecology is, so far, has not allowed us to dredge, and that's a good thing. However, I just thought I read today that the Supreme Court has said that wetlands are no longer going to be protected. That's sad. So, yes, we need to spend more money. We need to find an income stream. The Conservation District is probably a good portion of that. More recreational opportunities can contribute funds. The city has been allocating as much money as the budget process allows. The city has been allocating as much money as the budget process allows. More is needed. And I don't know, I lost my good witch of the north wand.
Okay. Well, with that, we're going to have one more coin toss. And let's see. Not so at half the audience. Heads or tails?
Tails.
Up, heads. You get to start with your end comments.
Just five minutes?
Five minutes. Up to five minutes?
Well, first, I would like to thank Gina, Voices of the Shores. There were a number of people who put this event together. I'd like to thank all of you for spending time in your evening to come and listen to us. I'd like you to know, I don't have all the answers. I'm not a city council member now. But in my jobs over the years, most specifically dealing with things such as big projects, needing to take a look at researching different things that I was not familiar with, I've done quite well doing that. My husband and I purchased a 38-foot catamaran at one point, and we sailed for a year. And there's a reason why I'm telling you this story. I was not a first mate. I didn't know how to do it, okay? I couldn't even figure out the knot tying. It drove me crazy. But we had a friend who was a sailor. He had all the experience in the world. And he came on our boat, and he was to go with us for the first part of the trip up the East Coast, out on the ocean, and then also on the, I always say the inland passage, but that's Alaska, it's the intercoastal waterway. The point is, he became very sick. So, we had to come in and drop him off after a number of weeks. And guess who became the first mate really quick? So, my point is, if I can do that, I can help to be a good voice and a good steward for your voices here in the city. I'm not trying to compare sailing a boat with the people here or things with, definitely the city council. But there's going to be challenges. And what you can expect from me is at least honesty, ethics, and a sincere drive to do the right thing for the citizens. And that's all I ask. So, I thank you very much, and have a great evening. Richard?
So, I agree with a lot of what PJ has just said. I want to give thanks to the Sound Guide. The sound in my ears has been phenomenal. I hope that you have all heard the sound as well as I have been hearing it. I thank all of the staff, Gina and all of the other Voices Group that has put this event together. As PJ said, I am honest and ethical to a fault. Wine was literally beaten out of me as a child. That's sad, but it's also true. I think that our council members, for all the time that I've been going to council, what I have seen is honest, ethical, and involved citizens who are working for a pittance. City council members get paid $300 a month, and it's a lot more than just the three to six hours a month that we see in the council meetings. There's all of the reading and all of the research and all the rest that goes into it. I do that reading and that research. I'm not an engineer. I'm not a scientist. I do a lot of Google research, but my Google doctorate is worth all of the paper that's written on. So, but what that Google research does do is when I hear the experts say, "This is the solution," then I can say, "Oh, that makes sense," or "No, that doesn't pass the BS test." So, that background, I bring that background to the city council. Somebody, PJ mentioned, the citizens at the top of the organizational chart. From my very first meeting in July of 2016, it was never a doubt in my mind that the citizens were at the top of the organizational chart. I don't need a big banner up there saying "citizens." The city council works for the citizens. They work for the community. So, we don't need, I don't think, a big banner at the top of the organizational chart. All of the city employees and all those city legislators, council members, the city staff, the mayor, they all understand that. So, why vote for me? Because I bring that honesty, that integrity, and that research of pension for really understanding what's going on. We all have what's called confirmation bias. And for many of us, when we go to do research, we say, "Oh, that information agrees with my thought," and that's where the research stops. I don't do that. I try to look at all of the facets of the research and then use all of my life experience and education to say, "Do these both sides make sense? And which side makes the most sense?" So, all I can do is promise you that if elected, I will continue doing the very best job I know how to do as a council member. And my end goal is to help move Ocean Shores to becoming the 21st century, providing all of the staff and amenities and services that we, the citizens, and the business owners and the residents deserve to have in a 21st-century city. The city has been doing a remarkable job of bringing back those services and the staff that we gave up in an effort to keep from going bankrupt. So, it's going to be your decision. Of course, I hope that you vote for me. What I do know is that informed voters make good decisions. And so, I look forward to seeing what your decision is, whatever it is, November 5th, 7th, I forgot the fishing date.
That one I can help you with.
So, anyway, I want to thank everybody for being here. You've all been a very attentive audience. I appreciate that there's not been a lot of background chatter. I have a lifelong hearing deficiency that I cannot hear some frequencies. So, when there's background noise, I can lose 20, 30, 40% of the conversation, even with hearing aids. You guys have not, you have kept attentive and quiet. Thank you for being here.